We've got a full house tonight. Okay. Thank you all for coming and actually getting away from the football game tonight. Who cares about the Denver Broncos anyway, right?
I don't think they can hear you.
Um, let's try one of those. Is this better? No?
Yes.
Okay. Well, my name is Don Jaren. I'm the city council member who's the mayor this year. And like to welcome you all here. What a great turnout. And of course, the topic is something that's central to all of us. This topic of growth is not only central to all of us, it's central to the reason why Sammamish exists as the youngest city in western Washington. And why the transportation corridors throughout Puget Sound are highly congested. It's a beautiful place to live. It's a beautiful place because of the Ice Age. The last Ice Age did a lot to carve it up and Plate Tectonics did the rest. We've got beautiful lakes, water, mountains, and it's darn hard to get between them and very expensive. And we've seen that for quite a few years now. Let me take a little poll. How many of you are natives to the northwest? Okay. How many of you have come from other states? And how many have come from other countries? Some of you, Tom Odell raised his hand twice. I saw that. Yeah. So actually, it looks like the majority of us here are not natives. And that's because we all recognize the intelligence of coming here and living here. What a beautiful place. And I came here in the 1960s because of a job. We have a lot of jobs here. We have a lot of good companies here. And growth is inevitable when you have good companies growing. Now, I grew up in northern Wisconsin. We didn't have growth in northern Wisconsin. When I, when my mother went to northern Wisconsin in 1920s, the city we were in at that time, north of Green Bay, was about 15,000 people. When I left, it was 14,000, and now it's about 12,000. Well, the one thing about it, though, is the schools weren't overcrowded. There was no traffic congestion. There were sidewalks on all the streets. Actually, there were alleys too, and you accessed your garage at the alley. So it was really a nice place to live if you didn't mind the fact that there weren't jobs when you grew up. So we have the yin and the yang of a beautiful place and good job market. And that's what we're dealing with today. Now, as Seattle built out, and when I came here in the 60s, of course, the Smith Tower was the tallest building in the west coast. You can barely see the Smith Tower now in the skyline of Seattle. But as Seattle developed, and I lived there for quite a few years, the growth started spreading out, came to the east side. We moved here in the 1970s to get away from the central city, get to the rural countryside and good schools. The good schools are still here. The rural countryside has rapidly disappeared. And that's why we're here today, to talk about it. There are things we can do about growth. Here in Sammamish, we decided in 1999 that it was time to do something because the county wasn't doing it for us here. It was allowing the growth here but wasn't producing the infrastructure, providing the infrastructure. So we built, we formed the city, and we immediately slowed down the growth and started building the infrastructure as fast as we could. In fact, as far as the growth is concerned, when we go to the, meet with the other cities and say, "How much growth, how are we going to spread out this growth?" And by the way, another million people are projected to be here in the next 25 years. How's it going to be allocated? We've always pushed back and tried to get the minimum allocation for the, for our city. Other cities haven't done that, but we have. But nevertheless, we still have the problems of growth. As a city, we've worked on a lot of ways to ameliorate the impacts, but we're not perfect, and that's why we're here today. We're here for a two-way conversation with you on what to do about the growth, how best to handle it. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to our city manager, Lyman Howard. Thank you.
I'm going to try this microphone. Is this working for everyone? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, Don. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. I mean that sincerely. Growth and its impact is extremely important to those of us as our staff and those of us that live in Sammamish. This is an opportunity to have good dialogue and good conversation. And at the same point in time, we'd like to have things, to the extent possible, be solutions-oriented. We're here to listen. We want to, we want to allow you to voice your concerns. There are a series of questions that we're going to be running through tonight. And this is a continuation of the online growth forum that we put on the city's website on our virtual town hall. So these are similar questions that, that we've asked there. So over probably the last several years, and it's gotten more, I guess, vocal or more frequent, that we're hearing from our constituents here in Sammamish regarding the rate of growth and the need to practice greater preservation of the environment. People here that live here, that want to move here are coming here for the same reasons that you did. It's a great place to live. And unfortunately, by their coming to Sammamish, they're putting impact on the infrastructure and also on the environment. The purpose of this forum and the roundtable discussion is to collect input, to help inform the city's policies as we go forward, and also, to the extent possible, give us some solutions. We've got a lot of smart people in this room, and we're very, very interested in hearing from you. So what we're going to do tonight, we're going to have a very brief, probably 10 to 15-minute presentation related to growth in Sammamish. We're going to break out a roundtable discussion for, until about 8:15. And then we're going to ask people to report out by table on ideas and thoughts that you folks had had through the evening. And then at the, at the end, we'll talk about next steps and try to conclude the meeting. City staff and the council is very interested. Even if you don't say anything tonight or feel that your voice isn't heard, please contact us. Send us an email or call us on the phone. We're very happy to, to talk to you. Your voice is very important to us, and it does matter. So the way we've got things set up, we've got, hopefully, a council member or a planning commissioner at each table, and they will help facilitate the conversation as we go forward. But if not, we'll have some staff and we'll try to step in as well. The other, the other thing is staff, when we get to the roundtable point of the program, will circulate, and we've got a variety of experts in that area. So if you have a question, please feel free to grab one of us. We'll be circulating. We'll do our very best to answer it. If we're not the expert in that field, we'll try to find that person. And if it's a question that we think that the whole group would want to hear, then we will take the microphone and try to handle it that way. So without further ado, I will turn things over to our community development director, Jeff Thomas.
Thanks, Lyman. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm over here sitting down, running the computer. Hello, everyone? Okay. So we're, we're going to go through about a dozen slides here, and there's a lot of information contained in a dozen slides. There probably could have been about 12 dozen slides. When we start talking about growth management and comprehensive planning and capital infrastructure and development regulations and the such. So the intent here is we're going to walk you through a basic set of information so we can get everyone. I recognize a lot of people in the audience here tonight, and some of you are experts in your respective fields related to engineering and planning and so forth, and others, we've just got citizens that may not even have heard of growth management prior to this evening. So we're going to try and get everyone a pretty straightforward baseline to work from to help you through your dialogue here this evening. Okay. So growth management, GMA, as it's acronymed. What is growth management? The Growth Management Act is state law. It was enacted in 1990, and it sets out a pretty ambitious agenda to integrate many different elements, such as land use planning, transportation, parks, capital facilities and investments, housing and the environment, among others. So it's law that's designed to pull many different elements together and balance and integrate those as communities grow over time. Who has to plan under growth management? Statewide, all counties and cities do have some responsibility under growth management. All counties have to plan and regulate critical areas and natural resources. That's a baseline for everybody. 29 counties, the 29 largest counties in the state, so that, that's about three-quarters of the counties. 29 counties encompassing about 95% of the state's total population has to fully plan under growth management. So all those elements I just mentioned a minute ago, 29 counties and cities within them have to plan for that, including King County and including Sammamish. Sammamish and our comprehensive plan. What is a comprehensive plan? A comprehensive plan for counties and cities is a document that sets out our vision, typically done on a 20-year planning period, looking 20 years into the future and saying, "What do we want our community to look like 20 years from now?" Again, all those different elements I ran through, those are all incorporated into the city's comprehensive plan. And the city's comprehensive plan looks to tackle a whole list of needs and desires, many of those listed on the right-hand side of this slide, to pull those into one document to set the goals and the policies for the city and to be used as a tool for the city as we go and we look to implement the comprehensive plan over that 20-year period of time. Our comprehensive plan here in Sammamish, the first one we incorporated in 1999, the first comprehensive plan was completed in 2003. State law requires us to periodically update that document. The last major update was completed, actually, just last October in 2015. And currently, we're on a schedule under state law to undertake that exercise every eight years. So the next major update is due in 2023. That's a process that typically starts two and a half to three years in advance of the deadline. So you could expect in the vicinity of 2020, sometime in 2020, that process would begin again. So we have a comprehensive plan. We've got an idea of some of the elements that go into a comprehensive plan. It's a 20-year vision document, as I mentioned, but what are we really planning for? Well, what we're planning for is we're planning to accommodate residential unit growth and employment growth. Those are the two basic things that we have some targets that we have to accommodate. So how does that work? We're going to focus here in this slide, we're going to focus mainly on residential growth targets here this evening, but do keep in mind that employment growth targets is certainly the other element that we work towards. In Sammamish, employment is far less here, unlike other communities like Redmond, for example. So it would be a much bigger issue for Redmond, looking at employment growth targets than what we have here. How does it all work? Well, the state, the Office of Financial Management, they're the agency at the state level that's responsible for putting together future population and employment projections. So OFM is the acronym for that agency. OFM puts together population projections, and they assign growth targets to counties throughout the state. The counties, they take those numbers and they work with the small cities, cities in smaller cities within each county, to essentially take the overall number and cut the pie up into different portions. City A, you get X amount. City B, you get Y amount of the total for that particular county. So those numbers and ranges that cities have to fall in, they are based on local factors. Some cities are more centrally located than others, for example, so they might get higher numbers. You'll see that here in a few slides. Here in Sammamish, in our short history, Sammamish, as the mayor mentioned earlier, has historically advocated for the low end of the growth target range and the population range. And we've continued to do that through the last update. Okay. So here's a snapshot of King County. This was from Buildable, what's called a Buildable Lands Report, and it was identifying a 25-year growth target from the period 2006 to 2031. This was the, the original number that we started work from as we began our major update to the comprehensive plan that ended last year in 2015. So county-wide, over on the right-hand side of the slide, you'll see that King County was assigned a population, excuse me, a unit growth target for the period 2006 to 2031 of just over 233,000. As you can well imagine, Seattle got by far and away the biggest slice of the pie. What the rest of this graphic shows is some of our east side neighbors and the growth target they were assigned. Sammamish received, ended up receiving the target of 4,000 new units. So again, that's 4,000 new units over a 25-year period. Okay. So one of the challenges that we encountered when we got that target a few years back now is that that target didn't quite take us through our required planning period under the Growth Management Act. The update that we just completed last year was for the period through 2035. So what we had to do was do a simple straight-line projection to take our average per year that we were assigned and add four more years to it. So our current comprehensive plan, updated last year, identifies a housing growth target of 4,640 units through the year 2035. Okay. So now we know what our target is, what we have to plan for in our comprehensive plan, excuse me. We have to figure out if we have the capacity to actually handle that number of units over that period of time. So part of the comprehensive planning process is to actually do a land capacity analysis. In our case, the 4,640 units was a fairly even split of anticipation of new growth in our town center area, of which we're all sitting in right now, actually, and spans down to 228th on both sides, down towards Main Street, as well as the rest of the city, the residential zones, essentially. So if you look, if you think about that 4640, approximately 50% of growth over the period through 2035 would go to the town center. The remaining approximate 50% would be out in, spread through the rest of the city. When we went through the exercise of determining land capacity, we did find, a few years back, that we did have sufficient capacity to handle the growth target of 4640. In fact, the number ended up yielding 5,120. I'm going to now speak a little bit to how we got to that number, generally speaking. Sammamish has, some cities will use, to determine land capacity, a method called gross density. Other cities use a method called net density. King County, before incorporation of Sammamish in 1999, used strictly a gross density approach. What we use today now in Sammamish is a blended approach. For the entire city, with the exception of the town center, we use a net density approach, and for the town center, we use a gross density approach. So we use a little bit of each. How this works, I'm going to go through gross density first. We're going to use a very straightforward example. We have a property that's 10 acres in size. The zoning of that property is R4. What R4 means is that it's a density of four units per acre. So this is incredibly complex math, but 10 acres of four units per acre gets us a gross density of 40 units. Okay? Net density, a little bit different math, same site, 10 acres. What we do with net density is we back out, or we subtract, land that's being used for other purposes or land that needs to be protected, okay, under environmental resource protection. So this is a very extreme example, but we want to make the point of the differential between the two. In this case, on this 10 acres, let's say there's a wetland with a wetland buffer. The total of that area is three and a half acres. We have to build new roads for new units to appear on this property. Roads and other utility access-type features equal two acres. We have to subtract that out of the 10 acres. We also have other requirements of our development code currently, for example, tree retention. Often, what we'll see in a subdivision are tree retention tracks that get recorded into an actual tract, preserving that area in perpetuity for tree retention and new trees being planted and such. That would be an example. A stormwater facility or a recreation playground-type area could be other examples where we would have to back out land. So you take your 10 acres and you start subtracting out all these different lines. You get to a net of three acres. Same zoning, R4, four units per acre. You get to a net density of 12 instead of 40. Again, pretty extreme example, but I hope that illustrates the point of how we apply our code and the laws that the council have adopted that are in place at this time. Net density is how it's calculated for the entire city, with the exception of the town center. Town center, we use the gross density, the first example I showed.
Okay. Could I interject one thing on this picture area? If, under gross density, this was the same circumstance and the critical areas, the right-of-way and the other areas, were subtracted out, you would have three acres of net available area. But under gross density, you would then be able to put the original 40 housing units in where you would have, under net density, these 12 units. So basically, they would be cramming 40 units in where here you'd have just 12.
Okay. So we've covered the comprehensive plan, the elements that go into it, the needs and the different, the different types of things that we look to identify goals and policies for. We covered the targets, the numbers that we have to plan for in the comprehensive plan, and generally speaking, how they're, how we arrive at them. The next step is actually implementing the comprehensive plan. Once the plan is done, we actually have to go about implementing those goals and policies that have been set by our city council in the plan itself. So we do that, we're going to focus on the bottom half of the screen here. We do that through three general ways. We do it through developing regulations and ordinances to fulfill the goals and policies so that when development does come in, we apply those regulations to those development proposals. And then when proposals go through the development review process on the backend, we issue permits, and you see new units appear. That's one way of implementing the comprehensive plan. A second way is through other planning activities. This could be through different programs and services, such as transfer of development rights, restoration programs, and identifying those opportunities, doing land preservation, putting land into conservation in perpetuity. It could be through managing our transportation and traffic systems, such as using intelligent transportation system technology that we have here now in Sammamish. So that's a second way of implementing the comprehensive plan. The third way is through building infrastructure, putting projects together, capital projects, and actually building new infrastructure here in the city of Sammamish. The mayor talked about that at the beginning of his comments this evening. This graphic here speaks to the four different general areas in our capital improvement plan: transportation, parks, stormwater, and land acquisition. What you see here, the burgundy, purplish-type columns, are total expenditures in millions spent through, essentially, incorporation in 1999 through to 2015. What you see in the blue columns are the adopted capital improvement plans for the six-year period, 2017 through 2022, money that we're planning to spend on infrastructure projects here in the city of Sammamish. So it's, you'll notice transportation specifically, it's in excess of $94 million is what we have in our six-year transportation improvement plan. Some of this money comes from impact fees. Our elected officials, our planning commissioners and such, will often use the term "growth paying for growth." When developers do new subdivisions or when new projects in the town center come in, there are transportation impact fees or park impact fees that have to be paid in addition to school impact fees to our three school districts. That money contributes to the building of these projects.
Okay. And I'll just interject at this point. Impact fees for both parks, as well as transportation for a single-family home in Sammamish, are approximately $21,000. And that is to offset or mitigate the impact of growth, both to parks and to transportation. Yes, sir?
Where does the rest of the money come that is not covered by the money contributed by the developers?
It comes through our other capital sources, through grants, through real estate excise tax, et cetera, and from general tax revenues. Growth impact fees by state law, excuse me, the growth cannot, impact fees cannot pay for 100% of the impact of growth. That's the state law. So people do have to...
Why not go for 99%?
We come pretty darn close to 99%.
But I do have a question. Will we take any questions?
Actually, actually, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask, sorry, that we, we wait for, on the questions to the, to the end. My apologies to everyone. So generally, we've got about $21,000 in impact fees, plus the schools do collect impact fees as well. Izzetqua School District collects about $4,600 per single-family home, and Lake Washington School District collects about $9,700 per single-family home. Those, again, are to pay for capital improvements to offset mitigation.
Water and water.
You very well do, yes. So the idea that the city is actually making money on growth is not quite accurate. We do collect a lot of money, but the reason we do collect that money is to help offset the, the price or the impact of growth to the infrastructure that we have. So what we have here, moving on, is an area that you all recognize, which is Trossix. We have three, or excuse me, four different slices of time here. You look back, 1936, on the very left side, you can see that this aerial is done and Trossix was logged. There's very little tree canopy there at all. We've heard from folks in comments that, well, Sammamish has old-growth timber. Sammamish has been logged probably at least two or three times throughout the area. And it does come back, but as you can see, Trossix in 1998, where the development is starting, there are very few trees around the, around the homes. It's hard to see from a distance. And then 2005, the trees are starting to come back. And then 2015, you can see some of the trees that were planted back in 1998 are starting to mature, starting to, to come back and provide shade and those types of things. So just, just, you know, we're, we're in kind of a dynamic situation. The plateau, when we all moved here, wasn't pristine, but just wanted to help set the stage for that. So that's an example of land development over time. So we're going to be moving on to the next phase, but one of the things I did want to touch base on before I do that is, you may have read in the papers, that one of our neighboring cities took a, for lack of a better term, quite a surprise step, a drastic step, in the city of Izzetqua last night, passed a growth moratorium. And they, they... Well, Izzetqua's situation is a bit different than Sammamish's. Izzetqua actually desired growth. They, they encouraged growth, and they got the state and the county and the, and other folks to become designated as a regional growth center, at which point they're supposed to take on greater densities of development, suitable for mass transit, et cetera. ST3, for example, they were pushing to have ST- ST3, for example, they were pushing to have ST3, Sound Transit 3, have light rail come to Izawa because of the growth that they were accepting. So they're in a situation, however, I think, where, from, this is my opinion, that they were starting to get growth and they couldn't quite deal with it. They had been encouraging it, and they are basically having to take a timeout. So one of the things, several of the areas that they have are different. For example, in town center, or their central Izawa area, they were talking about the fact, one of the reasons they wanted to have a moratorium is they were not getting affordable housing. One of the things that we have in our town center is, we are getting a lot of conversation about affordable housing, so I don't think that's going to be an issue for us. But it is a tool, and I wanted to address it up front. There are other tools as well. Simamish has availed themselves of some of those tools, like net density. Other things that we have heard in conversations from virtual town hall are, such as building infrastructure before we actually have the houses come here. That would talk, basically, what we would want to do in that case is pre-fund the infrastructure coming. And in that case, we would probably have to take on some debt to do that. So that would be part of the conversation that we would have with the community. There are ways to do things. We need to know, from you folks, your desires and your wishes, and try to craft things in such a way that they work, one, and also that they work long-term for Simamish and for the citizens that are here. So without further ado, we've got several questions. These essentially mirror what the virtual town hall questions were. So the questions are, what do you like living in Simamish? What do you like about it? What do you dislike about it? And from your perspective, what is the impact of growth and development in Simamish to you personally? And then, lastly, how should the city balance the importance of trees and the environment while preserving the rights of property owners to develop and extract the value of their land? It's a balancing act. People have a right to have, you know, a good quality of life, but then, again, other people have a right to derive economic value from their assets. And then, lastly, this is very important, and this is why we're all here tonight. What would you think the city should do to manage development? We're looking for your input seriously, and are very interested in having a conversation with you all. So I'll turn it over to the table, for lack of a better term, facilitators, and please have a good conversation. We will circulate.
Can I ask a question?
Okay. We promised people that we're going to do a report out, and I apologize for breaking up the good conversation that's going on now. But in the interests, in the interests of time, what we'd like to do is, we have Jesse Bond, our deputy city manager, and Tim Larson, our communications manager, and they're going to go from table to table. And if you would, I guess, for lack of a better term, appoint a spokesperson. And we're interested to hear, from your tables' perspective, the top two answers to number five. What do you think the city should do to manage development? So if you could report out, that would be great. We'll come to each table, and we would definitely appreciate that. The other items that you have, the other answers to the questions, will not be lost. So we'll cover that immediately after this. But thank you very much. And Jesse?
All right. One of these two tables ready? This is easy, right? Everyone agreed on everything.
You want just two? No. Okay. I'm just going to throw out a couple of numbers. Howard told me that we have 14,000 units, housing units, in the city today. So we're going to add 4,600 by the goal of 35, and we're going to update that in '23. There's no way our roads are going to cope with that transportation requirement. We have to have clever inventive ways to have different modes of transportation. We've got to work with local employers, like Microsoft, to develop smart systems for transportation to get people on and off the plateau, because that growth is just not going to be accommodated. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we'd like to see infrastructure built up front and make the developers pay the interest on the bond. And we'd like to see more attention to architectural design, tree buffers, and we'd like improved wildlife corridors.
Eileen is next.
Ms. Eileen? There was a lot of talk about the comprehensive plan, but what really guides development in the city is our code, is our development code. And we haven't, and we haven't been applying the best available science. The science that was made for us by the basin plan has not been strictly applied in the city. They've balanced the science with development, and we can't afford to do that anymore. We need to strictly apply the science and then allow development after the science is applied strictly. And we need to have more environmental impact statements for larger projects.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Next.
Do you want to stand up?
Sure. Oh, okay. Great. All right. So we had, we have about five here. Oh, I only get two. Okay. All right. Let's do, establish and enforce low-impact development, and then discontinue permit issues until the city can prepare adequately for growth through infrastructure investment.
So first, I think, or we believe that we need to build with design standards that make it so you don't clear the land to build the highest best use. And then, second was to implement regulations to support the environmental goals in the comprehensive plan based on science. So whoever was talking over here, thank you. Mr. X?
There's a microphone.
I'll hold it for you.
Okay. All right. We had a phasing in of the remaining developments over the next 19 years, so calculating out the 2,000 or so left homes to do, and then also to incur debt to fix the infrastructure. Okay, we are pretty much in sync with table number one. Thank you. So I will add to that another one, to have a wildlife corridor, or have wildlife corridor considerations, identify where wildlife is, and work to protect those areas, because we need to consider that in our environmental processes.
Changed laws, rules and regulations for the developers to leave more areas for trees and previous ground water circulation. So, and the second one was communicate up front so people know when a developer's going to come. Our table felt that the white sign with the blue lettering, they can't stop and read it because it's right in the middle of traffic hazard. And so get the word out way before that sign goes up so people know what's happening in their neighborhoods and affects them citywide. Thank you.
Purchase and protect green space so we can preserve it, and even take on debt to do so. Take on debt to do the infrastructure ahead of time. Support CCNRs and help neighborhoods protect their current character. Do a new regulation that calls for a minimum house-to-lot size ratio. Promote ADRs, that's accessory dwelling units. Balance the concept of tree retention, which we are doing very strongly, with the concept of putting trees as buffers around homes and developments in architectural design.
Thank you. That was just two.
We had a few. Number one was, treat everybody in every development the same way. The rules apply equally to everyone, from single-family homes to subdivisions. Hire more staff to oversee our urban forest and the enforcement of the regulations, and we would, we also had some people vote for taking on debt to get these things done. Concentrate density along the 228th quarter, and look at the application of our development regulations with respect to redevelopment, not just new development.
Well, our group was interested in pausing, a polite term for moratorium, and then really reallocating, reprioritizing all the city's resources at getting our house in order. And that's our infrastructure in every form: transportation, schools, sewer, et cetera. And finally, in terms of a little bit of emphasis on that, emergency preparedness planning, getting off this plateau in the case of an emergency. We feel like there perhaps hasn't been enough emphasis on traffic planning related to emergency planning. Thank you.
So if I could also ask, before I go to the next table, your note sheets, please leave them for us, and your individual comment sheets, you can drop in that box over there. Everything is going to be rolled up as part of the record of this meeting, so you still have some time to get all those filled out. Who's ready over here? All right.
Okay. So a lot of the things have already been said, so I will try to add new ones. Proactively planning to 28th, I think we all know what that means. Better environmental studies, enforce rules that are already in place, because it seems like they are not being enforced. And then, there was a, one idea had annexed more area towards Redmond Falls City for more industrial development so that we don't have a slowdown of growth. It would just go, I guess, another direction somewhere else so that... Thank you.
Okay. I think our table focused primarily on traffic and actually came up with a couple of opposite ideas from, I think, the table over here. If you spread the density out, the concept was that the traffic wouldn't be concentrated on 228th, and everything else could be absorbed. So spread density out instead of a concentrated area. Number two, if King County is mandating the growth that we have to have as a city, but then they won't support the growth in roads that they control, the city needs to push back to them and say, we can't take that growth.
Thank you very much.
And then, finally, the other opposite thing was that there was a concern about the private small, and as a term was used, infill development for the smaller, single-family homes should be able to do things that maybe a large development would have different rules to live by, which is difficult to do, but that was an idea.
So the first one was, improve the connectivity between neighborhoods, so we have more trails connecting each other to our neighbors. Another one that was very creative is, charge the new home buyer, no matter new home otherwise, charge the new homeowner, whether it's house, condo, land, and use that money, charge them a fee, and use that money towards supporting services that we have locally and supporting more affordable housing.
All right. We shared a lot of the vision of kind of a walkable with maybe a more varied aesthetic city. So there were a couple of key ideas. One highlight was the transit, exactly, working with connecting cities so that we have more avenues off the plateau, supporting the light rail effort and multiple modes of transportation. We talked about that balance between individual property owners wanting to do an infill with the tiny house, maybe smaller square-footage houses, having some, that square footage of housing to property ratio, some guidelines there, allowing ADRs, and making it, ADUs, sorry, making it so that individual property housers could extract value by, you know, splitting a lot, because there was a feeling that, right now, only big developers with tons of resources can go through the process. Tree buffers, and we were, you know, we're not that knowledgeable on where the trees go, but there's a mitigation. And it seems that when there's something like the Connor Jarvis, they have to plant trees for everyone they take out, but where are they going? In Simamish, we don't know. So allow, making sure that, maybe it's not 50% of the trees, but a portion of mature trees are fenced off and stay in every acre and every lot regardless. That was one. Promoting diversity in our neighborhood, in neighborhoods, and that was speaking to the aesthetic and some of the planning. That was it. Thank you.
Do you have another group here? Yep. Thank you. So I think we've heard many of our rooms' comments here already, but I think one of the interesting takes on the infrastructure, pre-funding the infrastructure, that I heard was a concern that going into debt and building out the infrastructure, which, again, was popular in our room too, before the growth arrives, would almost act as an additional inducement to more growth faster, perhaps even overshooting our GMA goals. And I think, trying to summarize, if we had a better idea of what Simamish would look like when that growth arrived, I think many of us would be more comfortable with it. What we're talking about here is kind of trying to push back against growth that we don't know and don't understand, and may not be up to the characteristics and of our standards. And I think people here have lived all around the world, they're from all over places. We've seen great cities, we've seen great towns. We should be able to have that here. Are we on track to getting there, or are we kind of accidentally going to arrive somewhere else?
Do we have anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else have to report? I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Actually, I wanted to thank you for your input and great discussion tonight. We will compile your thoughts, and if you think of something later and/or you didn't feel that things got written down on the sheet, please feel free to go to the virtual town hall and give us your input via that mechanism. So we will share the results, we'll compile what we heard tonight, and we will share it with the council and the community to inform our future actions. And then, we will also, I want to make sure that you know that we will post these results on the city's website, so you get to see what all your friends and neighbors thought. So, yes, question?
How long will you be keeping the city website survey open for people who want to respond who didn't say enough?
Okay. One of the, one of the, one of the things that we intend to do is to put the presentation that we did tonight on the city website to help people, perhaps, that want to go back in and re-comment, or people that didn't feel that they knew enough about it, that they do it that way. So we'll try and do that. Yes?
On behalf of everyone, I want to thank you guys for doing this kind of outreach, and also in trying to improve the communication methods as well.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much. Staff will be staying around for a few more minutes, but please, yes.